Is anyone here for the subdivision regulation public here? Yes. Well, if it's what we'll do is if you'll come to the podium and tell us your name and any comments that y'all have.
Okay. My name is Chris Allen, six four nine two Seventh Street. Read through the proposal and I have lots of concerns. Number one, I'm only going to focus on two of them. Number one, the second entrance at fifty homes would be a burden to property owners. My research shows that standard is a hundred homes or more before second entrance is required. Number two, fifty feet of right of way. My parents bought this property six four nine two Seventh Street fifty years ago with forty feet of Seventh Street access. I bought this property thirty years ago with the same access. Me, my parents, nor anyone in this room designed Seventh Street, or any of the other streets of Belton to have forty feet of right of way. But when the city of Lula took over Belton in nineteen fifty-six, they took over all the streets and left them with forty feet of right of way. Mayor Milton Turner approached me twelve years ago about the city putting a sewer line across our property. I said, I don't want it. He said, it will make your property more valuable. Several years ago, I got a letter from the city about a meeting to discuss a proposal about a sewer line running across our property. I told Dennis at the meeting, have the city buy us out and you can do whatever you want with our property. I don't want a sewer line running across our property while we own it. Dennis replied that they didn't want the land just to easement. And just like Milton, he also stated it would make our property more valuable. Fast forward to two years ago, when we found out the sewer was coming, we made the decision to sell. We found a local buyer and the sale was contingent upon our property being rezoned. Before the rezoning request went before the city council, Dennis realized that I had not signed the sewer easement. I met with Dennis at City Hall and told him that I wanted to wait until the property was rezoned, then would sign the easement. Dennis said that the easement had to be signed that week or that the city would sue us for eminent domain and take the easement, which would cause a rift between us and the city council and that the city council might not work with us on the rezoning and sale of our property. I signed the easement and left City Hall confident the city would work with us on the sale and rezoning of our property. Rezoning goes before the council, council votes are rezoning down, but annexes the remainder of our property into the city. Since that time, the city has approved a four hundred and seventy, four hundred and seventy home subdivision that will be adjoining eighteen hundred feet of our south property line. We have narrower subdivision for nineteen hundred feet of our north property line. We have two hundred and forty-four condos or townhomes or something coming on our west side. Our property has been designated preferred residential on the city of Lula future land use map. Everything that the city has done has been to set this property up for development and kill it as a farm. Now that the city has what it wants from us, sewer line across our property, which allows the city to do away with Fifth Street pump station, potentially saving the city millions over the life of the sewer, the city is now taking away our right to sell our property for its best use and maximum value. An old adage is that just because something is illegal doesn't make it right. If this passes as proposed legality by the citizen and not just the property owner, this isn't right. As you, the council, are thinking about this individually, debating it as a group, I want you to imagine what your thoughts and reactions would be if with a few votes and a stroke of the pen, the city decided to devalue your home thirty to forty percent. That is exactly what will happen to our family and others if this is passed as adopted as proposed. Thank you.
Anybody else who wants to be heard at this public hearing? Anybody else? Matter of beyond for public hearing again next Monday.
Thank you, Joey. Want to welcome everybody here tonight. Glad to see everybody here. It's a lot of different places I haven't seen before. I've seen them, I don't remember them. Get old, you forget stuff. And they're still coming in. I'm glad everybody's here. Yeah. Now I'm going to pray. You can sit there silently, I'm going to pray. Dear Lord, thank for the blessings of the day. Give us the strength, the wisdom, and the courage to do what's right for the city tonight. Amen.
For the stand-up, ladies and gentlemen. Please be open, Mark. Kitchen, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is the republic of the world. To honor the people of the United States of America.
Okay, stop talking. Just a comment.
Okay. I want to talk about be careful of the seeds that you sow. The choice we make can affect the way we live and raise our children for future generations. When we make mistakes in life, it gives us a chance to learn from them. We can't afford to waste time. We need to set goals, both short ones, long ones. Just remember, you will never make everyone happy, whether all of us end up through times helping others instead of finding ways to make things difficult for others. If we fail to let go of the wrong people, we will never be the right ones. Please be careful who you invite into your inner circle. We now have to decide what decisions we need to make to move us into the future. We can't afford anyone for anything to hold us back from moving forward. We must be dogmatic in how we want and need to accomplish our goals. So let us make decisions that everyone benefits from instead of comfortable living with empty promises. Be sure to tell us what we need to hear instead of what we lead us down the wrong path. All of us have strengths and weaknesses, but we can't let those keep us from reaching our goals and destinations. It is our duty as a people and citizens of this city to teach and to demonstrate the right attitude to our families and especially our children. They learn from us how to honor one another and how to live and work for the betterment of all. We will be waiting to see what we are striving for, to make things better for all of us and not for a special few. We are hoping that difficulties before us will lead to good and decisions, the better days ahead. Especially if we don't lose faith in the things we desire. The city of people as well as our citizens needs to keep working together and not keep blaming one another. We must keep going forward even if it doesn't work well like we want it to. Let us stop seeing the truth about life, its situation that is before us. Sometimes if things all happen as we like, there could be a very good reason and advantage for the reason behind things we aren't aware of at the time. There could be better things ahead that we have no knowledge at this time. We are looking for leaders in the city who can wing about prosperity for everyone and not be fatal for a few. Let us select leaders who have the faith and going to move us forward. We citizens are our chief citizens, our people, for to have you taken off to date since you have been elected. We citizens are feeling that we are behind where we should be and need to be investing, finding out why and how to get back on track. We feel that we are falling behind other cities that are on the same track to improvement and success. The important thing, our only way to see happen is what happens to be happening in the city of Lula. The result and how it will keep up will affect our city concerning work, decent wages, housing, social, learning, environment of different kinds of businesses, physical as well as mental health, safety, for people can get immediate attention and answers and not have to drive now and miles away. All these are necessary to serve the public in need. I am hoping our people as well as we citizens continue to work together to bring about whatever it takes to accomplish these goals. My personal concerns are not only for the present generation, particularly for all of you and the children of our next generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay. Everybody think. You know what? Make sure that that can be a change. We're running. You know what? We're starting our list of, this is a normal work yard, this one.
Right. Right.
And do a neck one. That's a pretty blue, just give me a second.
All right, we'll try to keep everybody honestly. All right, good news is we're in our fortieth week of the fifth year, fifth year after the end of our, ends on June thirtieth. I've been reminded too that I need to speak in my front. Nonetheless, we're should be at about twenty-three percent of the budget remaining on revenue. Not surprisingly, as we go through the course of the year, money unfortunately doesn't come in every month, it's the same, which is good. And it's the third and fourth quarters when we realize the dollar, so we're in a positive position right now. We should again have about twenty-three percent of revenue for the general fund coming in. We're already at eighteen percent, so it's really not a surprise historically. So more importantly, my favorite statement is, doesn't matter how much brought in, is how much have you spent? And so, just like you run your own household at home, so again, we're all at about twenty-seven percent, twenty-three percent remaining. We actually are in a positive position on that, we're about thirty-one percent remaining. However, again, we experienced a lot of those costs in the third and the fourth quarter and entering into the fourth quarter as we speak. So from a positive cash flow standpoint, we're about two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars a year to date right now, unedited, unaudited numbers. On the utility fund, same things, they're not going to be any different. Where we should be about twenty-three percent remaining of the budget, we actually are about fourteen percent. And as council knows, we've made some adjustments because we had projected some dollars for our sewer tax fees and have our exceeded those. So we've removed that dollar because it gives you a false sense. And plus, we've had, we've actually been reimbursed for G-Fa on sewer line high, which offsets those numbers. But good news is, where we should be at about twenty-three percent remain, we're at fourteen percent. So that's a positive position being. The water and sewer revenue, interestingly enough, those are the two that we look at most. Tells us whether or not we're paying the bills. Water revenue, fourteen percent remain, and our sewer revenue at eighteen percent. So those are clicking exactly where we had projected, thank goodness. When we go to the expenditure side of the equation, same thing, fortunately, we've actually benefited this year. We brought in more dollars on tap fees backing those numbers out and the G-Fa dollars that we spent. Another position where we should be at twenty-three percent remaining to be spent under the expenditure side, ironically, we're twenty-nine percent, which leaves us a positive cash flow of about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. So, bank balances, we're not seeing that big of a change right now. When I say we're not seeing that big of a change, the council would be well aware of dollars that they have appropriated. We're just not experiencing some of those dollars right now. I'll give you an example of that in just a second. But overall, bank balances, let's see. Remain pretty constant in comparison month against month. Right now, there's not a big difference between the previous month and this month. But I said I'd give you all examples, so only last month, council approved the demolition and powder rally for future improvements on that. And that dollar still remains out there to be spent, so we know we pledged some of those dollars. The same can be said about sewer line projects and road projects that we've got upcoming as well. So as an example, you know, pretty good position being, let's hope it stays true to that. Liability insurance, council and finance committee have heard about this. Fortunately, just like anybody else, we experience the cost of liability insurance. And we were asking for a special call meeting of finance committee for April eleventh. We'll find the time to work for everybody because that's when we'll get the bids in for liability insurances of being proposed for this year. And that's a big tick, Doc, an example of earlier when I said, yeah, we got a positive cash flow right now, but unfortunately, fourth quarter, you get to pay your bills on some of those items, and that's one of those. And it's a concern of ours on the liability insurance owning costs. Through the course of the last couple of years, our claim history is for the most part, not all true, but weather related as well. Well, thank Lord, what he's left us with, but at the same time, we're not over the weather. It's like it's never stopped raining since December, we don't control any of it, but that's been going to be a challenge with this year's insurance policy as well. You want me to go ahead and go into water and sewer, or you got any questions on that?
I understand the video.
Yeah, we just got to figure out the time to work. All right, she want to go ahead with water and sewer? So we talked to utility committee, you're going to hear a lot of that references back committee. So we actually are looking at some different items for the Chattahoochee and our soda tank, the county line. And one of those is updating that tank with paint cleaning. And we've got a bid document that'll go out on the street, so if somebody asks me to date on it, what they can cost to paint it and clean it up, the answer would be, I don't know, let's put a bid out on the street and find out. So that's what we're at right now. We actually have proposed maintenance agreement that would be considered capital improvements. Both these items, well, we just painted, we'll do some capital improvements over a five-year period of time. This way, council will be able to weigh both and see what first community interest overall. Sewer line status, so the line has been completed, they did the final last Thursday, so I shouldn't be getting to the numbers from them. And Joey and I talked about this on the board because both of us are interested in seeing what those numbers will be. But it looks like it's going to come in under budget as expected because we had set aside certain dollars for allowances. Unfortunately, we didn't have to use all those dollars. New Skada system, so Skada, for those in the audience that don't know, so Skada reports us all our system improvements with water, and that example there would be the tank levels in the water tanks, the chemical feeds for the well that we operate, the depth of the well, the production of the well, how many gallons per minute, how many runtime. It's a lot of data driven. So what we have in the system right now is twelve years old. And unfortunately, the program that we're using for the current Skada hasn't been updated in a number of years, so it's no longer supported. So we're having to go out and look at new Skada that will actually do that for both water and sewer. Sewer example, I give you the same thing with lift stations that we have, as well as the waste treatment plant, and to give an example on waste treatment plant. We have fourteen data, fourteen hundred data streams that come from the waste treatment plant. So you can see how important all that information, being able to review it and look at it in real time, is important. Today, as an example, we had seven alerts that were data streams that were out of their normal play. Well, the reason was that we were actually doing some maintenance, but that's what Skada does, right? It's just get an instant view of the systems, of multiple systems that we have. So unfortunately, when I say unfortunately, would be a big change for us to change the system out in the, in the future. But at the same time, it's, we're in a position where without having additional support for the current program we have, we'd be wise to wander down that road today. So in the future, you'll be hearing more and more about that as we explore. We had an engineers meeting about that today because that's highly technical, way above this ball head right here, if we look to others for that experience. Other than that, I don't have any questions unless y'all have something for me. So the proposed IGA, so I'm bad about using acronyms. IGA is an intergovernmental agreement. And in this particular case, Hall County is proposing a one cent sales tax for transportation slots, which is special local office and sales tax. That would be placed on a referendum to be decided in November if it should go forward. Prior to that, there would have to be an intergovernmental agreement between each of the cities and the county about the dollars and how they would be spent and what percentage they were given. So through the course of the last couple of months, we've been in discussions about how many dollars might be generated, how those dollars might be spent, specific projects that the county wants to go forward with. And then, of course, at a local effort, if the referendum were to go forward and be passed by constituents, how many dollars would actually come back to each municipality? And it's a five-year tax that would have to be renewed every five years. And they've estimated they generate about three hundred and twenty-five million dollars over the course of the five years. An intergovernmental agreement, the IGA that I'm referencing to, would have to be approved by this group, as it would be with all the other municipalities, to say if the referendum goes forward and is passed, how the distribution would take place over that five-year period of time. Unfortunately, Mr. Holman said, and I were just talking about that, it'd be nice to have the IGA in our hand today. And we don't have that, and I want to make sure it gets into Mr. Holman's hands so he can review that document well in advance and the council taking consideration on that. You'll see on there that I put tentatively, April twenty-fifth, they're proposing a meeting with the entire city commission, or council in our case, that you would have a voting meeting to accept that IGA on the twenty-fifth. I've already explained to them how difficult that would be because most y'all have day employment and they propose that that be around eleven-thirty, try to tantalize me by telling me they have lunch for you. But that's going to be a difficult task, and I understand that, so we need to talk about that individually. It's hard to talk about it right now without having the IGA in hand to make sure that that would be something y'all would support. And I know nobody be in favor of a different one cent sales tax, maybe the benefits outweigh the other, but at the end of the day, that decision isn't made up to you, it's made up by a referendum, if a constituency can vote on that. So let's get the IGA here. I was told that we'd have it no later than the eleventh, which is tomorrow.
Yes. So in regards to this proposed IGA, it's my understanding that the way that the money will be doled out is maybe in part by percentage of everything that they get in, part of that percentage being like what our percentage of our population is, correct?
Good.
But, but that's not always the case, as I understand it. They could choose to bring more their way if they feel there's more of a necessity somewhere else in the county? Or did I misunderstand?
No, I'm glad you brought that up, so let me expand on that a little bit.
Thank you.
So what's been proposed is that they've identified about seven major projects in Hall County. The first thing I would tell you is, all seven of those, oh, let me forget about the twenty billion, they're going to be mad at me. But all seven of those projects take place from Gainesville. So, and I can name a couple of them right off the bat, is Spout Springs Road, another fifty-five million dollars to finish that. Thank you, Miss Mayor, you ought to go over that list. Then they have McCamber Road, is it fifty-two million?
McCamber was actually fifty.
Fifty-eight. Then they have Gainesville projects and they have number. All those projects, like I pointed out, I'd like to say the vast majority, but all those projects are taking place at Gainesville South. And why is that? Well, you could look back over the last ten years and see where's the development, where's the demand, which goes back to your question about how you prioritize. So at the end of the day, they've decided that eighty percent of the three hundred and twenty-five million dollars would go to those projects that are being addressed. The remaining twenty percent would then be divided by population in Hall County, by the municipalities in the county. So in our case, over a five-year period of time, the city of Alula would only have the opportunity to collect one point nine million. Now, I don't want it to be said that that doesn't sound grateful on our part. Proportionally, we would have been better off if they'd taken the three hundred and twenty-five million, divided that by population, and then prioritized projects from there. So at the end of the day, we pay our proportional, and I say we, that would be our constituency, pays a proportional amount of dollars as well. So I think it goes back to why it doesn't need an endorsement, nor are they asking from the city council. But if it does pass, it has to have an intergovernmental agreement to go forward. But what it does say is that the constituency should understand that issue if they place it on the ballot. And understand how much the benefit, when I say Lula, it's also anything Gainesville. Now, I said I'd be remiss if I didn't include Commissioner Poole is to address this issue because we don't think that fair amount of dollars is being spent in North Hall. And so what the county has proposed, and they earmarked, twenty million dollars that would be spent over that five-year period of time to make intersection improvements primarily on Highway three sixty-five. And I'll let y'all be the judge of that, I'm just telling you what's being presented to us with the idea, if you pass this T-slot, it opens up a bank of dollars from the Georgia Department of Transportation. So in other words, the communities that are taking care of themselves, they enhance that by allowing more dollars to be matched with that. So it doesn't come with a guarantee. Their hope is, at the county level, is that they post twenty million dollars towards these intersection improvements along three sixty-five, which by the way is a state route, that DOT would max it. It doesn't come with a guarantee, but that's their goal, and I could see how that's obtainable if there's enough dollars left in the piggyback at the end of the day. But overall, you got to remember that North Hall continues to develop. My concern is we're destined to make the same mistakes we've made in South Hall. Otherwise, we wouldn't be spending fifty-five million dollars right now to research widened Spout Springs Road. So at the end of the day, probably the best place to put it is in the hands of the voters and let them decide that. So coming back to the IGA will just define if it's passed, what entitlements the cities would all be entitled to.
Few more questions? Sure. So, based on what you said, right now, we're looking at roughly, I think you said one point nine million?
Right.
That would come to the Lula area.
That would come to the city of Lula.
Now, if this referendum were to get voted on and were passed, how much do our revenue, would the city of Lula, through this taxation, how much would we produce? Two point five, five million? How much of it would we produce?
So I think I know where you're going, so. So that's made right now estimate of collecting three point, three hundred twenty-five million dollars over the five-year period. If it exceeds that amount and they were to raise more dollars than that, we will get our equal percentage that was agreed to in the I G A. So all those dollars we're using the number right now forecasted, that would come back to Lula of one point nine million. Uh, that's assuming it meets those estimates. And it exceeds those estimates, we would also get those additional dollars.
So I'm just gonna, maybe rethink it. Right now, we're saying approximately one point nine million to the city of Lula. Over the course of five years, if this referendum passes, how much in taxation will be collected from citizens of Lula over five years?
So they'll pay a penny in pump what they will spend. That's, in, in other words, that's how that works, just like special local sales tax today. You'll pay it. If you spend a dollar, this would raise a one-cent sales tax that will be directly driven to transportation. So there's no projection.
Of which we only have three pumps in Lula.
Well, we're not talking about pumps, we're talking about dollar spending. So for every dollar you spend, your sales tax would increase by one cent than it is today. So you can't, unfortunately, uh, one of the problems with the state of Georgia is they can't tell you exactly where every dollar is raised. We may be a donor city, but then again, we very well may be positive cash flow in that we don't collect that, but we're going to get proportional by population. That's really the only fair way right now to administer it because, like I said, the Department of Revenue can't tell you where every dollar is spent. But they can tell you what the population is doing. Is that a pretty good description?
That is, and we've asked that. I can't tell you how long it's, it, can you narrow that down from the Department of Revenue and tell us any better geographics? And Dennis has told you the same answer we've been told for as long as I've asked the question. That is no, uh, here's, we've got it divided out by your county population. I think they may be able to get you somewhere close to the city, but they can't get us the specific numbers that, that we request. It's by county.
So the reason that I bring all this up is for those that are sitting out here in the audience right now, wondering when the time comes, should they vote for the referendum or not? Um, just trying to put that information out there so that they can see the, the benefit to voting for a referendum. As I understand it, it's a city of our size with the way that the taxation will come in, a lot of people, you know, probably fill up my vehicle maybe once a month here in town. Usually I'm filling it up somewhere else.
Right.
So we get a lot of people that are coming through town that stop at the,
Ex-Home.
Ex-Home and the Shutter On. Uh, so we get a lot of, uh, from that as well. So, uh, just trying to put this in a way that, that people understand that this is, is a potential positive thing, even if we only get it one point nine million from it. This is a positive thing for the city.
It is, in that regard. And you collect that money over five-year. The city and, and, uh, I know last week when we had the city meetings, uh, we discussed about how those dollars would be, uh, spent and they're earmarked, obviously, for transportation only. Uh, but the transportation can be in resurfacing, uh, sidewalk development, street skate development. Uh, I guess we could extend that to parking, cul- cul- uh, replacement. But they're all going to be specifically to, uh, areas that you can touch in, uh, for transportation. Our challenge here, as is every city, uh, is resurfacing. So I would suspect that if, if the referendum were to pass, uh, because we'll identify that, that I G A about how those dollars might be spent, that more than likely the majority will be, you know, factored resurfacing because that's more or less the new surrender net. And it is for every city. Everybody fell behind in cost. Uh, got away at hand and then yet at the same time, a dollar comes in, have not been a challenge. So for a community, for us, back to your statement, it's a benefit. For us, where we don't have property taxes, uh, city of Claremont, uh, and Gilsville doesn't have property taxes either. So you can see how this percentage of one point nine million dollars makes a big difference. At the end of the day, I think that would probably, uh, even if y'all ever set a middle rate above three mils, you wouldn't generate one point nine million over five years under the current system. You're right, it'd be procedures of benefit. As this works go forward, assuming the I G A is passed and adopted, you'll hear, I almost used the word promotion of development that tax for consideration. So the constituency, uh, through the media will get the opportunity to better understand how those dollars can be generated and where those dollars are.
Couple of things I got there. Each block is actually all sales, not just getting some.
Yeah, it's all, so for every dollar you spend, you're paying a month.
Yeah, it's so many pumps, that's why it's not to get, it's all sales period. Off the, breaking down the sales tax right now, we have, we have a special sales tax, is that correct?
Right, and they have special local office and sales tax. It takes us to eight cents.
Right now, we're talking about eight cents sometimes. Take three, four, four cents per state, Jeff.
Just to reference that, uh, so just so you understand, so local tax three percent plus special sales tax. But as an example today, for, uh, Splot eight, uh, hmm, that's generated, well, we currently have a bank balance, one point five million. Although the dollars have to be spent, they're not spent on operation, they're spent on capital and free for the mother park. So you, you can see the significance of dollars for one cent.
Sales tax right now is, is it four percent for the state, three percent?
Right.
And one percent for.
So just, just for Larry, I just want to make sure. Um, Hall County, our current retail sales tax total is seventy percent.
Seven, I'm sorry, seventy percent. Seventy percent of which we get three percent for every one cent.
And, and if this referendum passes, for, for, for instance, Hall County, if this referendum passes, they would in, increase that total sales tax that one would pay from seven percent to eight cents.
Right.
And is, is, uh, is Banks County also currently at seven percent?
No.
They are at eight.
They're right. They just went eight. And actually, you know, we went through the same discussion then, but we had similar I G A, which is interesting. He brought up where the dollar could collect. So there are communities in Banks County where they only could identify one register, one whole register. And the county was, took, took a position with, if they could decide where dollars were collected, well, maybe that community wasn't entitled to more dollars. Well, when anybody in this room goes to spend a dollar, I don't care if we go to, uh, Commerce or we go to, uh, Lula Grocery or we go to Gainesville and what have you, we're spending that dollar with the idea that we'll get some benefit back from it. So that argument kind of goes out the window about where it's collected. When, like I said, anybody in this room spends it, they know they're paying their taxes and they should see a direct benefit back to them. Which goes back to, we get our percentage of population based on only twenty percent of the three hundred twenty-five million dollars that's being proposed to be collected. Good question.
So the twenty-fifth, is the current proposed meeting?
It is, and I will, as soon as I, I said I would get a memo to that effect this week. I talked to him, uh, on Thursday. Anyway, I told him it would be a challenge for a very reason. All but one member, you know, has daytime employment expectation, which is going to be a challenge. I would thank this much for some of the other cities as well.
Is there a big enough agenda? If I get, if I get more questions about that one? Okay, give resources.
You're, it's fine, you go ahead.
Considering implementing a hiring incentive to get employees to come to work with the city. We're, we're shorting one person in the shop over here and one person sold that right now. We're trying to get some applications, people can hire. We're looking at maybe get employees themselves, get, find people to work for us and get them seen to do that. We're looking at that. We're also looking at personal leave policy of the, of the employees that we have on hand already. We have to make a firm decision, we have some things to be looking at. Okay, something else we want to do. We're going, we want to change the works that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, uh, if I can go back to the, we're talking about you guys bringing to the H R, you mean, the, the hiring incentive for current employees who might grow?
Yes.
Someone, okay, that's all I figured out. Thank you.
If everybody's one of your friends, you know, where, where you're hired is, we can give both of the boxes.
Thank you.
Okay, something else we're, we're looking at also is changing the times of the voting session, the record session of the city council from six, from seven P M back down to six P M, so to get some people home earlier in the night time, if you're late all night, get home. That's something we're looking at. Okay, somebody needs to hold me.
Did you want me to place that on the agenda for next week? I have seven.
Yes, yes. I think Georgia's telling, there's got to be a public hearing before we can do that.
Yeah, we have a public hearing, so we need to just go forward with the public hearing right now. I mean, we could go ahead and identify dates going forward with it.
Yes, the earliest date if you approved it next week would be June nineteenth. Or if you wanted to suggest that, then if we have a public hearing and if you chose to move forward, then we'd run.
What, what does your government have? What, what other hearing does that have?
Yes.
Unless you're doing anything. You can't get it later.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, something like, you know, you want to consider, uh, volunteer chaplain, is that huge?
Yes, sir, so, after speaking with, um, quite a few people in the community, for and against, um, I, I would like to, uh, and actually having spoken with Joey as well, the reality surrounding it. I would like to, uh, consider whatever process we need to start to have, have, uh, you know, we need to see about a temporary committee or something to discuss policy procedure, how we would go about looking for a volunteer chaplain that would be a non-denomination type chaplain. I know Joey said he's got some, um, some good resources to, to provide us in regards to that. I just wanted to bring it up tonight so that we could start the conversation about bringing on, uh, we're looking for a volunteer chaplain for the city, for the purposes of the invitation, heaven forbid, you know, we lose another city worker and that city chaplain would be available, provide services, moral services, whatever that might be. But as my understanding, we had one at one time, but we no longer want to know the exact reasons as to why that didn't work out. But I'd like to revisit that and just open that up for discussion.
Do you want one person, just sit, for the seat, or you want to rotate it there?
I'm open to suggestions, just, you know.
I want your data.
Yeah.
One employee, not a single.
No, just wanted to start the discussion about what that potentially.
Position on that sort of person.
It could be one person, it could be multiple people. I'm looking to conversation about it.
Okay, Dr.?
Uh, let me, uh, we're going to send that item to, uh, committee number eight.
My only request is, is if we sent this, the only committee that we currently have all into would be H R committee, in which, uh, I, I think that this is something as significant as this, that every member of the council could want.
So that would jump back to the council. So I just want to make sure what maybe we want to do under so we can start the ball roll, if that's what y'all.
That seems like, unless we form a special committee for it, H R committee would be, I imagine, would be the one that would, would fall under.
So, Mr. Mayor, you want me to put that under H R or we can put that on future agenda?
And I would also just say, uh, any of my fellow council members that are not part of the H R committee, if you have any input or if you get input from any of the, uh, citizens to forward that information for consideration to, uh, the H R committee.
I have nine seats. Plus has been replaced. Literally back with trucks. So if we get as many miles as the last bus, we get a new one.
Okay. Stormwater repairs.
So we've identified, we've actually evaluated a number of storm, uh, water issues. Uh, one is the main, uh, stormwater line that runs, uh, that is many, many, many years old. Probably dates back, uh, to before the fifties in some regards, because some of it took place on D O T and railroad right away. Nonetheless, we found that, uh, at Chattahoochee and Carter Creek, there's, uh, some issues with regards to the amount of flow that they're currently having, the condition of, uh, stormwater, uh, infrastructure, and those need to be addressed. And, uh, it's one of those, again, well, how much dollars are we talking about, but they're considerable. Uh, because we would upsize the size of those, uh, too, as well as replace the deficiencies around. So initially, when we talked to the utility committee, we actually had a proposal which identified, uh, an estimate of the raw costs, this is one of those, you'll never do, know until you do the actual design, which not only is the design tight, but it's the amount of stormwater flows, uh, from all areas that are impacted in that. And then obviously the survey information that was sport to the extent, uh, that we would impact, uh, the properties. And hopefully they'll all be within right of way. I think if one area, they probably wouldn't be. That being said, uh, the proposal at this point for just those two elements, the design and survey, would be an amount not exceed fifty-three thousand dollars. So, uh, the idea is, is if the council, this would be an item placed on the agenda, we'd capitalize that, we recognize it's, uh, Splot dollars, uh, that would be spent, uh, for the design and the survey information. And then once they have the design and all the surveys, then they can put together a bid package for the actual redevelopment of, uh, that, those stormwater repairs. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes, would this go to utilities than finance or just straight lines?
It, well, we, we talked about it because we managed to approve it the other night. It's a shocker when you see the, the dollar amounts, but we talked about utility and finance. So, uh, both of them understood, and unfortunately, the only way we can understand the whole cause is initially get the design and survey done. So they're both aware of it, and we have the opportunity. So the question is, do we want to put this, if we have the documents ready, that allow us to go forward with the design engineering, and then they would hire the surveyor, uh, at a projected cost. So, uh, if the council's final, that will place that on the item, item, uh, for consideration next year.
I say really? I'm making a motion to consider it?
We don't need a motion, you know, because it's worth setting.
But, uh, you keep on doing it. Yeah, we say it.
D thirded and, uh.
I say go ahead.
This is one of the.
I mean, you said it's got a lot of.
Water tank. You know, somebody says, well, what's going to cost when you have water tank? I don't know, but we'll put it out for bid and we'll buy that bloody with cost. Because that way we used to be competitive in this particular. Because that way we used to be competitive. In this particular case, we're specific to the design. You know, we'll have a better understanding of the overall replacement and upgrades will be. I will say this, and you just came about, you know, discussions with the utility committee and the finance committee. The amount of stormwater that comes off the Lula elementary is significant. And it feeds that whole system that we're talking about. Now they're looking to make improvements on the property and actually add more flat space, put in additional parking, all things that would hopefully help that Lula elementary continue to prosper. But part of that element is they'll also create more runoff that has to be controlled. So when we do the design and we understand what they're proposing to do, the stormwater that they generate, it's likely we would go back to them, not so much on the design and survey, but on the actual construction, with the hope that they would have some participation. When I say some, they don't generate all the stormwater. That's how you begin to decide by the design, who contributes to what, to what extent. So something to keep in the back of your mind at some point. They actually, the superintendent was here today, he's like, those improvements will be made by August of this next year. And so would everybody else in the room, but it's likely that it's not the... As far as elementary is going to improve.
You know, the question about that. This is what they're all been looking for, Cory Alley, tear them down, turn them...
So the council approved the last meeting, the low bid on the document. We have been turned over to the engineer to review the documents and the contract agreement and the notice proceeding. And with that, we have two bonds that are required in there for performance as well. We have a pre-construction meeting today, assuming with no changes to the contract, what we found then would go forward. Joey has reviewed the contract and you're happy inside of that extent. It reflects the council's decision. So if the council would take that under consideration tonight, we'll go ahead and sign off on that agreement as described for the dollar amount and then go from there.
Is this where we're going to hand a motion?
Yeah.
I'm just getting a little discussion. I want a motion to approve, but... Not certainly, motion by the Gene Brown, Senator Garnes did, for having Cory Alley contract advinced. Oh, there's a...
All right.
Of course, you thank him much, though.
It's more of a utility issue now with the land and gas life and Georgia power and play the form of work. It's estimated that even with rain event, once they break ground, two weeks at tops, probably more like seven days. And then we described today in pre-construction, the hours operation, there'll be hopefully minimal inconvenience. An example, weekend work will be limited to only Saturday until noon, no work will take place after seven P. M. These are the type things you want to be a little concerned about because demolition, you know, they'll always have somebody on the ground to reinforce the demolition, making sure where their equipment operates that the public can't intercede or act on. It's, that might be... Their performance with regards to people that freeze is more than satisfied up to this point.
He said, start tearing down in a few weeks.
They, if they can get Georgia power in this week, it's very likely they would start first.
And by the time they're getting done, it is?
So they're saying that probably, if given two weeks, one day they go in the dirt, but it would probably be seven days. At seven days, they're not going to work all day Saturday or Sunday. So it does prevent the type project, the sooner you start and you finish, the more dollars they'll probably enjoy. Our contract doesn't change a dollar.
Good. See, that's true. Okay, I'll be seeing.
So we met with committee last week, we're making those changes that were proposed. I will bring the document back for Joey and I talked about, hopefully before the end of the week, he can review those changes as well. The next item, subdivision regulation number...
Sorry, I just wanted to talk about that. Either one to get some clarity on the changes that were being made. Do we have an idea of what the changes?
We haven't finished the draft, but that's why I was going to go over to you, Johnson. I have, nobody made it at that meeting. I have, we just have to put them in form on time.
Okay, and when that, when that comes, are we going to be expected?
Everybody's going to get it. If we make him happy, then everybody will get it tonight.
Right, and then we would be expected to vote on that the following meeting?
I would suggest to you, because I don't see me getting it, so Joey, we talked about Thursday, Friday this week, that that maybe and I still push a month forward.
Well, what changes, you know, my concern is, is I propose several changes in there and I'd like to know what changes.
And we've recorded all those. So when we finish that document, we'll send it back to the committee and back to y'all with the proposed changes that have been made.
I know that it's, you know, several were, you know...
I'll give you an example of what I'm talking about. At the end of the day, you had made some proposals about fees and what have you. So we'll show both fees, we can take it back to committee for a decision or a recommendation. Or, you know, those were all yes or no questions. At the end of the day, you know, you were clear about your views on that. I think everybody still gets to take that under consideration, so in other words. There was no decision made the other night about fees. I'm not going to propose that there is.
Right, so, so what changes are, I mean, you're saying that there's a draft that's going to be in the...
I'm working on the draft now, that's what Joey and I are doing.
Right, but, you know, the, the, the key items, I mean, I, I wouldn't want us to, you know, have another draft and then go back and we'll just have the same issues again. We've been doing this since...
Your life.
Exactly.
Well, I just want to make sure, first I'm going to bring to Joey, make sure he...
Well, I mean, this is a good opportunity, this is our work section. Just as we did in committee, this is where all things get here, and we can discuss that.
I'll just, Dr. Perry, go with it. Only because, well...
We've got, you know, we've, we've all had the, the information, like, like you said, since, since July. One of the items, well, I'll just, we'll go to a, a simple one. This was items one oh five dot two, working consent from permit that the I B C declared ten items that would not require a permit. There, they proposed documentation that's been submitted month after month. Includes a reversal of that on item number one and item number ten. Item number one being, you know, one-story detached accessory structures, provided that a floor area does not exceed two hundred square feet. The I B C says no permit required, all the documentation, and by indication from committees that they do want to have permit. Is, is that change? I know you, you may reference the shanty you kept referring to this, item number one is as a shanty. And I don't understand the connotation.
We don't permit it for to do less setbacks, we don't want more setbacks, but it's build a whole road these, they're mainstream.
That's, that's completely different.
That's what allows, if we don't permit it.
I, I think that this is, this is a great, I think would need to be discussed with, with all of our citizens. And I think, I think they should have, I mean, if you want to, to show that, you can go ahead. But I just don't think that a two-hundred square foot structure requires a permit. The I B C is saying no. I, I mean, I think we're supposed to do the next one, we're not getting anywhere.
Ten, ten building, sitting in a building yard, but we have no permits, we have no, no way to tell the people where to set their shanty, make it right beside, next door neighbor's yard fence, we put it out next to the road. We got to permit it.
If it's, if it's been put in, in a right of way, then...
No, they have to right of way. It's not, it's not set by, if we don't permit it, we can't, we can't...
So if they're putting, if they're putting this structure, but then setback lines, why would they need a, why would they need a permit?
Well, there's no, that's what I'm saying, if you, you don't. What's to keep them from sitting right on the property line if you don't have permits?
Then they would have put that without...
It's not a residential structure, it's no setback law, that's what you're trying to say, there's no permits.
Okay, you have other ordinance about setbacks that would...
What, what keeping a building that has connection to...
You can move that, if, if somebody put that setback that, that they shouldn't have, then they can move that structure.
Tony, can I add something to that, what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
There are more portable building companies in this area that I can shake a stick at. Not one of them is required by Georgia law to have a permit to deliver and set that building. It is up to the homeowner to understand what setbacks are. That should not require a permit because we want to make sure they're in the know. Unfortunately, the average homeowner isn't going to know every single bit of the I B C that we adopt and pass. At this point, it's common sense. Somebody gets portable building and they sit it somewhere where it shouldn't have sat, or had it delivered somewhere where it shouldn't be delivered, that's where the code enforcement comes in and says, guess what? You got to move it. But it does not mean you should have to get a permit for a portable building that's not on a bound painting. So with Tony, I stand firm, and I do not believe for a moment that we should have permits for portable buildings.
Amen, correct.
So I have to strike my mind, so to make it clear.
This is about portable, I mean, portable, you know, pre-constructed buildings, this is about any...
If my building, that's a portable building, it's no different than a pre-constructed.
But I'm just saying, this is about, they're talking here, just for clarity. If you have a pre-engineered building and you move it in, we don't require inspection of that other than the tie-down. Or, as the mayor pointed out, setbacks, but in this case, they're talking about any floor area that would exceed two hundred square feet.
Not any floor area that does not exceed two hundred square feet. Right, and, and what we're saying is, you know, well, what the committee's saying is, we don't care, it needs a permit. And I'm saying that that is just, that flies in the face of every citizen in this city, industry. I, I, I know that I can build a building, anyone in this room can build a building that's part of twenty square feet, a hundred square feet, eighty square feet, two hundred square feet, in any apartment.
Where do you build?
In your property.
That's the problem, you never, never from.
That, they setback.
They were compliant for it.
That's not, that's... That is a structure, yes, and, and what we're talking about are structures that don't have foundations, they don't have electricity, they don't have plumbing.
Have any setbacks. Is there ever to go with any setbacks?
No, not going to, I'm seeing.
My issue is that...
What, what are you trying to point out?
I'm being seen, they don't have any setbacks.
That's, that's right, you know, that if you have, this does not address setbacks. If somebody builds a structure and they put it right on the property line, on their neighbor's property, don't you think their neighbor could say, wow, I didn't realize that you built that on my property, could you please move that? Now, several individuals might think that, wow, that's, that's very difficult to do. Well, you can take it apart, or you can drag it, there's all kinds of remedies. I'm not saying that, you know, you should waive setbacks. But what you're saying is that just to ensure setbacks, that no citizen can be trusted to understand where their property lines are or where the setbacks are. And that therefore you're going to impose that they require a permit with inspection. And I, I, I think that that's, that's ridiculous because the International Building Committee says, hey, there's no safety issue here with these ten items, but you, and, and I guess, I don't know who else seems to think otherwise, that we absolutely have to have a permit. And I think that that's overkill and not necessary.
If someone wants to put this, this type of structure on his road fromage, on Bellard Ridge Road, he's got about eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty road fromage, he put sixty of these, eighty by eighty of these, right in road, right? Is that going to mess up the city? Is that going to look good in the city of Louisville?
It's got property. I believe that what you're proposing, Mayor, is an overstep of your bounds with anyone in any city. I mean, this is, this is crazy. I mean, apply the same thing to item number ten, and again, I'm assuming that that's what you're concerned with, the setbacks. Item number ten, decks not exceeding two hundred square feet in an area that are not more than thirty inches above grade at any point are not attached to a dwelling and do not serve the exit door required by section R three one one dot four. That is a deck for those, it's, it's a deck that maybe out in the middle of your backyard, that perhaps maybe you wanted to put a, an umbrella and a table and chairs, you know, that, that you wanted to do. What you're saying is that that person cannot put a deck in their backyard that's not attached to their house. The I B C says this is a clear item that there's no safety issue here. We recommend that no one ever require a permit, but you do.
No, I do not yet.
You do not yet, so... You're part of the committee, and, and everyone could see the, the video if they want to go see how you reacted to these items that I were posting. You were opposed to item number one, you wanted a, you wanted that to require permit. You were opposed to item number ten, you wanted a permit for that too.
If we, we don't, if we don't agree with...
I, I wanted to adopt the I B C, as it's written, that's why I said...
But with number one, if we bypass that, that means that I want to go out and build a woodshed to put my wood in, and I'll have to get a permit. And I don't think that that is, I don't think people should be permitted to build a woodshed.
If one wants to build a doghouse, want to build a doghouse, you're going to have to have a permit under, under this rule.
Wait, it's more...
Permits are good.
And not basically, if you want to build a doghouse that is three foot by four foot or two foot by two foot, that's one foot tall, this proposed legislation that we would be, to be abide by would require that we have a permit.
And if you're bringing your lumber in your backyard to do something as simple as that, you could potentially get fined.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's item number, where is that at here? Is that item number one or is that item number two? That's a whole nother story. Yes, item number two, if you fail to get a permit for the doghouse, that's two foot by two foot, the proposal is that you shall pay a fee of five hundred dollars. Or, or, or an amount equal to double the normal cost of permitting, which is whichever is high, and the cost of the permit. Now, if you have a, a permit for a four foot by eight foot structure, that's, that's thirty feet, four foot by eighty, that's a, that's a sheet of plywood, okay? Now, my permit is for, you know, it has electrical inspection and it has a foundation inspection. But that permit is three hundred and eighteen dollars. Had I done something like that and didn't realize I needed a permit for it, which I did, but if, if I hadn't realized that I needed a permit for it, that'd be three hundred and eighteen dollars times two plus the three hundred and eighteen dollars. So you're talking about nine hundred and sixty dollars for perhaps maybe someone who didn't realize that they needed a permit for something. So this, this law that you're trying to pass, as, as you're, as you're proposing, as you're, as the committee is proposing, is, I can't ask, I can't vote for that. I cannot do that.
If you're building a shanty, we put lights in it, we put water in it, do we need a permit for that?
Well, first of all, you said water and you said lights, that's why the electric power requires a permit.
Same, same size truck. It doesn't matter, once it's got power and once it's got plumbing, it requires a permit, this, this excludes it.
No, it does not.
Talk about an inhabitable structure.
It, it doesn't say a habitable structure. It does not say a habitable structure, it says structure.
It's here, it's here, believe me, it's here.
The water and electrical would be under a different section.
Exactly, you're absolutely right.
Is that correct? Your water and electrical permits would be listed, the requirements that you would need for that's under a different section. So that's not included in this picture.
All of each, y'all will need to go back and look at the definitions that are laid out throughout the code to make sure which structure you're referencing.
I, I do not have the exact line that covers what you're concerned with, but it's in here, I have read it. I, I, I do not have the exact line that covers what you're concerned with, but it's in here, I have read it. I don't have it top of mind because I've been focused on this, because I've been trying to get others to see this issue, and these are, these are the highlights. You know, I gave everyone anything else, but, you know, these are the highlights that need to be, need to be modified. And I, you know, I suggested that, you know, there are, there are section four penalties for, they call them fees, okay? There are fees, there's a section, it's item number five? So it, it is, uh, I'll hear, we'll, we'll read it together. Um, I, it's item number two, and I'll just read the paragraph. The building official may assign administration to the code enforcement, city marshal, police department, if adopted for enforcement, additional citations and/or investigations as due necessary. Any actions by the above-named entities, and I think this is the, the part that needs the grammar corrected, it says, any action by the above-named entities may appeal to the Board of Appeals slash City Council in regard to application and/or interpretation of code, unless the reported act is criminal in nature, which will be heard by the municipal board. I think I, I've made, uh, changes there that it should say, and, and Joey, I think he could have noted this previously several months ago. An applicant may, I would say, an applicant may appeal any action by the above-named entities. An applicant may appeal actions by the, the building official, the code enforcement, city marshal. So that, that's the way that should read, and I did provide you all a copy of that. Um, but item number two goes on to say, enforcement failure to comply permitting slash inspection slash violation or stop work orders. So they're gonna cover all four, permits, inspections, violations, and stop work orders independently. So it says, permit, any person who fails to obtain a building permit to erect, construct, offer, or repair the building structure, repairs building structure, shall pay a fee of $500. Now, that was the issue that I had, that it was $500 or an amount equal to double the normal cost of the permitting, whichever is higher, and the cost of the permit. I suggested that you reduce that in half to 200. Now, the statement was made that everyone else around us has higher fees, someone had may mentioned 1500, I'm not sure which one, which government did that, but they're saying 1500, maybe it's 1500 max, I don't know. But I don't think just because somebody else doesn't, that we should do it. I think it's, you know, very reasonable for us to do some homework and understand that, you know, I believe what, there are about a thousand, a little over a thousand homes here in the city of Lula, and our median income, median, is $25,025. That means that half of the households in Lula make less than. And I think that $500 is excessive, and I think that that can be financially devastating, especially to those who are perhaps maybe on, um, $900 of the disability or social security payments, because I know that. And, and I think that would be extremely detrimental to them, had they realized that they needed to get a permit to do some sort of repairs in an emergency and didn't get one.
For which, for which a permit should not be required to begin.
Yep, if, if you're thinking this is going to penalize, you know, fee, fine, whatever, a builder by trade, they know they have to get permits. Does that mean that they always do? I, I don't know, but a builder knows, the residents here may not know. When they don't, they're not builders, they're, they're not repairing their homes or other people's homes all day, every day, and something like, something simple, they may forget and realize, didn't realize that they needed to have a permit. So that, that covers permitting, I just suggested that you cut it from 500 down to 200 because there's math involved here, and I also have to strike out equal to double the normal cost. So I think it's fair to say, pay, shall pay a fee, and that's right, because it's, it's not listed as a fine, it's listed as a fee, a fee of $250 and the cost of the permit. My, you know, so, you know, 250 plus the cost of the permit, I think that's enough. Because as it was stated many times to me, that, you know, the city is not in the business of generating revenue off of this. So why are we having such high amounts? And I know the statement from you, Joe, was, uh, they'll never do it again. That's what it said to me. Now, inspections, the inspections have the same amount, you've got permitting, inspections, and then just violations. I'm suggesting that you rate lower those from 500 to 250 on those three items. Because inspections, if any person permitted projects who failed to obtain a scheduled inspection and completes any or each segment of each segment of work, shall pay a fee of $500 and shall satisfy the work performed by a registered structural engineer with the acknowledgement of the building official, unless the permitted address slash work has prior approval of the building inspector slash official to obtain inspection by a registered engineer in advance of the work being performed. No work shall continue until additional fees are paid and the building official is satisfied the work has been completed or corrected per code. Now, while I could go into that paragraph and dissect that and have issues with it, all I'm saying is, for the sake of time, of the almost year now that we've been dealing with this, I'm suggesting you reduce that from 500 to 250, because again, what that's referring to is not, you know, a, a, you told me not to and I did it anyway, this is a, I didn't realize, I didn't understand the code. I didn't realize that. It's an accident. Then you've got violations, the third section, this is the third or fourth, I'm almost done. Uh, any person permitted project who fails to follow code will be subject to a fee of $500 per violation if the matter is not corrected within seven days. Repeat violations of the same code will automatically result in the fee being applied. Violations shall result in re-inspection fees being applied. No work shall continue until additional fees are paid and the building official is satisfied the work has been completed or corrected per code. Again, I'm just asking that that be reduced from 500 to 250 based on our community.
Let's go for that.
I, I just want to say, I, thank you, thank you, Garnet, I appreciate that. The, the fourth item I wanted to leave alone is the stop work order. You have it at 500, okay? The only reason I'm not saying you need to reduce that to 250 is because I'll give you the 500. People have a problem with 500 because in this particular case, this is a blatant, not a mistake by citizens. What this would be, and this is how it reads, stop work order. Any person permitted project who has issued slash posted a stop work order and continues to perform additional work other than corrective measures shall be subject to a fee of $500. No work shall continue until additional fees are paid and the building official is satisfied the work has been completed or corrected per code. Now, this one, they, they've been notified, they understand it, and they say, you know, I know you told me to stop, but I'm gonna do it anyway. Now, I'm okay with you, if you want to say 500, you want to say 250, I'm fine with that too, but if you want to say 500, I'm not gonna stop. I'm not gonna stop, you're gonna vote for 500. Don't have an issue with that.
I could have to go with 250, whatever you want.
Now, this is the work session, you can do what you want, and I guess we'll have to wait until it goes into Joey and then gets back to us, and hopefully, this information will have been changed and we can actually vote. You probably want to vote on it now, but I don't think it's gonna pass, I don't think it's gonna pass. So trying to get it to a point where we have legislation against our citizens, that our citizens will have to abide-by, that it's passed. Um, I know that there was issues with item number three, you had several citizens talk about this. You had mentioned there's another version, that I don't have a printed copy of it, that has, and Dennis may know this, about the port-a-potty and then also the dumpsters, has had a construction dumpster on site before construction begins for each permit issued. I think you've changed that, I just don't have a copy.
I have a quick question about that, as far as dumpsters. So, here in the next probably four or five weeks, I'm gonna be pulling a permit to have my bathrooms remodeled. I'm not gonna pay $450 for dumpster, because I've got a six-foot and trailer with two-foot mesh walls that all of the stuff can be put in, covered, and it can be sent off to the dump. So, as dumpster, are we saying some kind of container to haul it off, or does it specifically have to be a dumpster?
It is a new construction. Dumpster wouldn't be required until, uh, the grading was complete, and then, at that such time as, uh, that. Uh, I'm trying to get ahead of myself here, don't expect me to take place. Uh, the A B shall be erected, have construction dumpster on site before construction begins, uh, after grading.
After grading, that, that was the.
And that was new construction.
Now, when you say new construction, let's, let's get clear on the definition, it says, all new construction slash and/or exceeding 50% improvements to a resident property. Or exceeds new construction exceeding 400 square feet.
Right.
So, do you know how many square feet your bathrooms are?
Combined?
And that'd be, that'd be a great 400 square feet of bathroom. Um, but, uh, yeah, I don't know, you might, you might fall into the category of requiring a dumpster.
The reason that I bring it up is, if we have a requirement for a, for a dumpster, and again, compared to everything that you brought up, this is probably small potatoes, but some type of, of device to, to haul the, the degree off. So, you know, if a contractor pulls up and he's doing new construction in the backyard, and, you know, he's got a trailer sufficient enough to do it, is, is that individual permit, whether it's homeowner or the contractor, gonna get fined because they don't have, actually, a dumpster sitting on site?
They would not, according to this, they would not get additional inspection.
No, they're fined for not having the dumpster.
Uh, we're not talking about fined, they're talking about wouldn't get an additional inspection. Here's what, as a example, this is what the committee saw, that, uh, those are examples of where we've had issues with.
And all of this makes perfect sense. It does, I mean, it's, what you're showing me is a picture of a job site where they, they've literally just thrown everything out the front. And that looks like trash, we don't want that. And everybody in here would agree, it's like trash, and we don't want that in our community. Would you agree with that, Tony?
I would agree.
Okay.
I would suggest that, uh, verbiage be made, that it has to be, you know, not, it has to be.
Proper, respectable or something, because they even make, um, and, and I've seen it in, in my years in construction, I've seen it. They make these, uh, like, six-by-six, um, bags that get dropped off, throw everything in there, and, you know, obviously it's contained, it's not just thrown in the grass, but it's not, it's not dumpster, um. There, you get them, you can get them at Home Depot or Lowe's, you set them up, and they throw everything in there, and then they come and pick it up and they take it off. So again, you know, I'm not trying to split hairs here, but if we're talking about adopting something, um, as legislation, um, I don't want to make any room for somebody down the line who could, in their own words, say, you know what, that's not a dumpster I want to find.
Waste receptacle.
Waste receptacle. And then maybe we can describe what a waste receptacle could or should be, as opposed to just a dumpster. Yes, but new construction can be, I'm building something new in my backyard, that's new construction.
Absolutely.
That's what, new construction doesn't mean a new home, it just means something that wasn't there before and you're about to build it now. So if, if me or any other homeowner wants to build something on their property that they are legally allowed to do, that needs setbacks, meets every other thing that gives them the permit to do so, we're saying you have to have a dumpster on site. Well, I just don't like that, that verbiage, and it might not be an issue today or next year, but, you know, three years from now, after we've amended this legislation, somebody might say, you know what, you don't have a dumpster, I want to find you. I just, I want to, to, to take any of that away, I want it to be as specific as we can possibly make.
I just hope that we can have legislation restructured, and if we can get it before, we can get it Friday.
There's no way that I, so let me just tell you why I say that. I work with your direction.
Sure.
So, somebody, I, you know, I don't make it up as like, somebody has to tell me what we're putting on, on paper that's gonna satisfy everybody, otherwise, you know, at the end of the day, you don't want me writing legislation where I just make it up as you go. I mean, uh, Gene, you and I had this conversation the other day, you know, these are all choices you, y'all made. That's why we take the committee, that's why, and I know this has went on forever.
Ten more?
I've been in every meeting, but I can only go with what y'all tell me.
Who did you need it from?
So normally, that would go back to the planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning? We've, we've gotten this out of planning and zoning, like, three times, no points.
Nope, we had made five times.
Okay, so Morse.
Change the way you're planning and zoning.
I mean, did, I'll write this, this, this isn't hard, I mean, I've written, written all of the corrections. Um, I'll write this. This is not, uh, too difficult. This would take me, say, start, finish, five hours, but modifications that I have, and then you can ratify it, vote on it, whatever you want, carry it up.
As far, as far as the dump, what about, going back to the, the. China.
The IBC, I don't believe, has.
Approved in China.
We, I mean, we can look at the IBC, sure.
I don't even see that address.
We have access.
Something that's split across, because of those examples there.
I don't like the one chip, talking about, talking about, I sure put it up, take it away.
I think approved receptacle, but then we have to define what an approved receptacle is, which shouldn't be too hard to do.
Then we got to approve what goes in then.
Well, the construction dumpster idea doesn't tell you what you can or can't put in it. The, the landfill that, where you're trying to take it to.
They'll let you know what's approved.
And what's not, and so if you put something in it that's not supposed to be there and they catch it, guess what, you're not done. So, it's, uh, I, I think, uh, I think it approves, uh, an approved receptacle, onsite approved waste receptacle, before grading.
During.
Or, is that what you were stating, Dennis?
I'm sorry?
You were stating it was, uh, that the additional verbiage was, it had to be there before grading begins?
Right, we talked about, you know, uh, there wouldn't be a necessity for, until after the grading was.
After, after grading.
Right.
I would agree with that, there's no reason to have one there, during grading, unless you were really able to treat it against dumpsters.
I just want to make good use of this, you know, work session, so that we don't have to continue this, this discussion over and over again. Um, so after grading, um. So the recommendation, this is, this was from Dennis, he's saying that he usually gets this stuff from, uh, the planning commission. Right, saying that you want.
No, 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 no. This one, they told me, I put down the verbiage, they told me, so that's why I'm coming.
Right, so that's coming from Joe, Gene, and Garnet. And, uh, so, have you, have you, have you written anything, or are you just telling me what changes you wanted? Because, I mean, there were clearly changes that were made, just you wanted to, you wanted to require permits on item number one, item number 10. Was that something that you wrote down, Dennis?
No, that's something, just to let you know, that when we had these committee meetings, we went over each item and then they commented from there.
So they commented?
Yeah, so I made the changes as they commented.
Correct. So, so we now have additional changes. Garnet, you think that, uh, the proposals that I made, reducing those to 250 instead of 500 is acceptable?
I said for four.
All four? All four. And, uh, then the, the dumpster issue with the, uh, changes of verbiage to approved waste receptacle, and then also the verbiage of after grading, leasing, after grading is completed. Now, would you like approved, uh, waste receptacle to be, um, approved by a building official?
You're gonna have to give it something, I don't know why.
Yeah, I'm gonna, we just need to define it, I think we just need to define it, and there, there are enough approved, um, waste. I think we just need to define it and there, there are enough approved um, waste um, debris receptacles that can be used uh, in, you know, that, that we can define it in there.
All right. So, with that particular item, we, I, I believe that we have some changes that need to be made, this is our work session, we're, we're talking about it. Joe, do you think that uh, those are acceptable? Or do you not think?
I don't give a load of this.
Do you think they're acceptable? You're, you're part of the committee that sends it to Dennis, so are you saying that you're not going to send it to Dennis?
I won't see him.
You want to see what?
The uh, draft.
You want to see the draft, even though I've, I've verbalized this month after month, provided you with this copy highlighted with strikers and everything that would be anybody. Well now you want, you definitely want me to rewrite it and I'll do it. You know what, I said it, now honor my word, I'll write it for you. I will write it for you. So, if I write it for you and I get it to you by Friday, do you think these things, if they're in there, that you're, you're okay with that?
I don't know, Ben.
You don't know? I'm, I'm telling you, all I'm gonna do is modify these things and you, you can see these things. So, if I do those things, you're, you still.
There must have been change.
If he's serious, that's your answer.
Why not?
Well, okay, that's your answer. You stick with that. Gene, are you okay with it? You're, you're, you're on the committee. If I write the uh, the document with these proposed changes that we've all discussed, if it's exactly as I, as I discussed, are you okay with it? You're fine.
We discussed about an hour ago.
Garnet, I'm pretty sure you're okay with it. You've been very, you've assisted, you've been very assisted with.
No, that's what I'm saying, I want to see it. That's your, no change.
I'm not gonna sneak anything in, I promise.
Garnet.
Don't change more, just do what you said.
Well, I would like to ask you on number seven about the pre-gravitated swimming pools uh, that we.
We changed that.
The fifty two inches?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
So, uh, do you have a copy of these changes so that I can actually use it to write this document for verbiage?
Again, I have not finished it.
You have not finished it. So, I will ask about the, and you just wanted to say instead of twenty four, you'd say fifty two inches?
Right.
Okay. For item number seven, pre-grad, pre-gravitated swimming pools that are less than fifty two inches deep. Okay.
Go with it.
Done. All right. I'm good, you can move on to the next item then.
Some subdivision regulations, we've got copies of, you know, got public comment, again, next comment.
And then that will go back to the meeting once we.
I do have one quick question for Claire. Subdivision regulations, just gonna finish in my own words, correct me if I'm wrong. This is in regards to what we as the city have decided we want to see happen for future developments. It's nothing to do with existing subdivision, right?
So Joey can address that, so.
I mean, I read through it as quick as I could this afternoon when I got home, but I didn't have time to read all of it. Basically what I saw was what pertains to new development coming into the city, not existing subdivisions that are already established.
The answer to your question is yes, and the subdivision doesn't necessarily have to be a large. Subdivision, right, it could be that you get the flat to divide a piece of property, but it would only apply after the date of adoption.
Right.
So, if you have a subdivision that has twenty seven lots and they're permitted to re-dump divide a lot, then they would have to comply with new subdivision regulations if they came in to subdivide one of those twenty seven lots.
But for water for Glenn behind me, which is like ninety nine percent developed.
Right.
And for um, what's the one? Their, uh, Mount, thank you. Those subdivisions that are all but done, this doesn't pertain to them, so, these regulations and policies that we're wanting to adopt. I've had several um, communications from residents about it and they were referring it as the, the neighborhood policy for something.
Cuz, it has nothing to do with cuz.
Okay. I want to make sure that there wasn't something else going on. I assured them that I was pretty sure they were talking about the subdivision regulations and that there wasn't something else nefarious going on that I didn't know about.
Yeah, so the, the issue of, which we've heard too, we're not allowed to enforce subdivision cut.
Okay.
So this has nothing to do with that.
Just one second.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a little bit, so there's nothing nefarious.
Okay, uh, solid question. We, we tend your policy correction.
So, uh, well, we talked about utility, maybe in the challenge is uh, you know, what's available to us today in the contract and what's been available to us in, in the past, you know, it never came at a cost to us and this would be, uh, when we talk about this committee, it'd be impossible for us to manage with what, those thirty yard dumpsters, two of them, they'd have to be manned, it'd only be for one day collection and I promise you that wouldn't be enough. And it's something that, that we've offered at no cost for all those years. At the end of the day, this is an example of uh, it's not something we control, but everything comes at a cost.
We're talking about spring cleaning, what are you talking about?
Well, in regards to that, solid question, we just got a dump truck, right? Which is one of the reasons uh, we will use that as for uh, like tree debris and stuff like that, is that correct?
Yeah, we use that for, for uh, wherever we run.
Okay. When we're going down the street and we see somebody's piled up some, you know, small logs, tree limbs, whatever, what is, what is the cost if any to the resident and, and how is?
There's no cost to the resident, we've never charged for uh, that particular application. And that, I hope that's something we'll continue to do, you know, through all these years. But you know, we've looked at what it costs, it cost us probably uh, two days of labor and whatever you want to associate with fuel and the truck. But, a good example of that is, it's not bad. Uh, today, uh, the used pickup truck nineteen ninety eight was addressed in here, uh, we've maintained it well, it's not perfect nineteen ninety eight model, but uh, this is the first plug we're putting in it, what a good expense, I hope this one lasts longer. Uh, but the challenge for us is the amount of time with that. So we have it specific in our uh, utility procedures, what size, uh, I think it's three inch circumference uh, by the limbs, don't have, you know, I think they can't see they put and way more. I hope that's something y'all would continue to do. But in this particular application of spring cleanup, you know, they no longer offer that service to us and it would be, it would be more than challenging for us to provide the same level of service.
Now, is that only available during certain times of the year or if somebody's?
In the past, we offered it, when we offered it, only one time.
Resident calls up and says, hey, I did some spring cleaning in December, I've got some yard debris.
Now yard debris, we're talking about furniture and everything else.
Oh, 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 I was, you know, I was talking.
We're talking about people cleaning out their.
You don't, you don't feel computers and stuff like that? I am, I'm talking, I'm still on it, on the yard.
Yard, we, we continue to get, there's limits, what we get each month, and I hope we'll continue that for as long as we can.
Okay.
This is just one of those where you just, you know, everything enforced and played, world we live in now has changed and it's quite a burden and unfortunately, we've offered for all the years we've had.
Is city initiative rezoning, we're having one public here, is that a great release?
No, this was a, this was the city initiated rezoning, it'll be heard next week. And some run notices have been sent.
And various from uh, five, six, one shot, that's also major protect.
Right.
And for fifty five, six one shot, it's also major protect.
Right.
The various for Carter Street.
So that's new, go ahead.
Just going to, I'll probably give you the other. Question taken in the uh, Philms Avenue apartments, fourteen hundred thousand.
Yep, you're hit.
I spotted it, didn't I?
I'm looking at the date, but anyway, it's uh, May.
May twenty second.
So that's planning commission here for, and then it'll come back for council, which is in one of my.
You can hear about Hawkeye in about.
I have given them notice, I talked to them today.
Okay, it's another competent thing. Update need is public comment is for thirty, fifty, twenty seven, five, six.
Yeah, that'll be a drop in and, and R D C will make a presentation.
Everyone needs a big note.
No, we'll actually do it here, because we don't want to keep confusing everybody from one place to the other, like I.
No, that, I don't like to do it. Okay, any important?
So that's this Thursday at nine AM.
That's a great news, I'm dropping this.
The one where we're meeting with, with the D O T committee, so we have a commitment, uh, Tony, you're not able to attend, Denise, your intentions are attended, Mr. Mayor, I didn't know if you were able to commit for that, and then we had up and gone it, I think Gene offered you his spot to go to that, so that'll be nine AM.
You know, you don't want to, I don't know. You're not working. And why, why you can't go to me at the work, but I can, you can, I can. Yes, yes.
Now it'll remind you, the Trenton, on that matter, uh, Mayor and I talked about it earlier, Trenton Forum is tomorrow at eleven thirty and I have four spots, I think, uh, Tony, where you planning on attending that?
The uh.
Trenton Forum.
Uh, yes, I will be there.
Right, so, and Denise, so we have two of us, because I won't be able to attend tomorrow and the mayor won't be able to attend tomorrow, so anybody that's got one, just get a free lunch, my child will go.
You can go. Okay, move on. Garnet, I'll.
So the information is in your box on that, so, and all you have to do is tell them that you would report a case.
The two ladies, maybe next, next, my, next, next one is a separation. From the new, the lunch, and you're just thirty for now? This office has a fourth month in my month, but two years in the night? Yes. And as the name of, railroad days sign up, like fifteen six, railroad days, like fifteen six, and you know, sign up and demand.
Amen.
Please, okay, now we're gonna listen to some comments and we're gonna go with the second city. Good plan, that's a good.
I guess we'll, here, any roach you doing in second city? So, I take most, I live on Main Street, um, my concern is about Carter Alley construction or deconstruction, I guess. So, is there any plans put in place to exterminate any kind of bugs and rodents or anything back there? Because I live right, right next to it and I'm already having roaches come my way from the, you know, everything being abandoned behind me and rats too. Yeah, so is there any type of like plan put in place for that beforehand or?
Not as far as the demolition, that's, yeah, I guess that's one, well, actually, but.
I would greatly appreciate that, because it's hard to hold it up, you know, own a business and have it open to the public when you've got issues with those kind of things. So that would cost us money as well, you know, that's my only concern.
Could you tell me?
Uh, Aiken Wilson. That's it, thank you guys.
Thank you.
More time is, give them a comment? City comment? Right. Hey, down in ten, we're gonna take a decision. We probably won't make a decision now, we're gonna hang around. You know what, go now. Yeah, we're doing nothing. So. Yeah, that's not bad.
I ran, I think everybody else.
Down, down?
Yeah, they made a call, but it's all came back.
Well, if others still here, we continue, we'll actually make a decision, let me make a decision. I'm gonna. Mercy. First by the gene, take the Denise, come first now.
Yeah, for close.
So. She, she hasn't.
All right, shut.
Oh, all right, let's go home, everybody sit down. All right.